Hello and welcome to the 2023 At Large School Board Endorsement Candidate Forum. I'm Zach Lincoln, Vice Chair of FCDC's Education Committee and your host for this afternoon. Before I introduce our candidates and kick off this forum, I'd like to make a few housekeeping announcements. First, I'd like to remind our candidates and our audience of the rules of this forum. Candidates may not endorse or attack each other. It should stay on topic and within there are a lot of time to speak. I'd also like to remind everyone that this event is sponsored by the Fairfax County Democratic Committees, Education Committee, and State and Local Committee. Therefore, this event and all proceedings of this committee are neutral and not designed to favor any candidates. We are looking forward to the endorsement caucus and supporting our three winners, whoever they may be. Lastly, for our audience, if there's anything you want to ask our candidates, send us some questions in the Q and A. With that out of the way, let's get this forum started. We'll be starting with opening remarks. Candidates, you will have two minutes to give your prepared opening statements. We will be going in alphabetical order for this round and we'll be rotating for the duration of this forum. Mr. McDaniel, you're up first.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thanks so much for taking time on this, probably the best weather day we've had so far this week. My name is Kyle McDaniel, Democrat entrepreneur, small business owner, but the most important thing that I do on a daily basis is just to be a dad to my two little girls. My kids inspired me to run. They are what caused me to think about doing this. And they're, the reason that I continue to do this is the stories that I hear on this campaign trail. I hear stories about parents struggling with IEP plans for their kids. I hear the stories of the high school student who kept running out of money on his lunch account. And it turns out he was buying food for his classmates who had no money. I hear stories of a lack of equitable resources distributed across the county, and we know that a lack of equitable resources leads to an act, a lack of equitable opportunities. I think as Democrats, we probably agree eighty-five, ninety, ninety-five percent on policy. But whether that's academics, mental health, STEM, the environment, or whatever it may be. But I'm running on this issue of teamwork. The next school board term is going to have a challenge on its hands. There's policy challenges and there's political challenges. But we have to focus. We have to be a team. We have to be a united front. We have to work together. And that is the biggest issue in my mind that's on the forefront of this campaign season. We have to stand up against book ban. We have to stand up against whitewashing our history curriculum. We have to stand up for our LGBTQ community. We have to defend our teachers. We have to defend our kids and defend our parents. And that's the reality of the next term on this school board. So we have to have candidates that are going to be ready to hit the ground running on day one, not just in the fall campaign. But when we're sworn in. And I'm proud to be endorsed by a lot of folks, our former chairman Bulova out of Carney, the Victory Fund and more. But I'm running to protect our public schools and I'm running to solve problems and to bring innovative and collaborative leadership to our school board. Thank you.
Mr. McElveen.
Well, thank you, Zach, and thank you, Michelle, and our FCDC Education Committee for putting on this forum on this beautiful day. It's wonderful to be with you. Just to start with my why, why am I in this race, running for a position that I previously held for eight years from 2012 to 2019? And the answer is simple. A lot of the work that we started remains undone. I have two very young daughters, one in kindergarten, one who's one-year-old. So I'm very much invested in the future of this school system for the next eighteen years plus. So I want to make sure that the system is as good as possible as it can be for both my children and for yours. I want to take this opportunity and open your reading remarks just to look back on some of the many achievements we've made over the past decade plus in FCPS. Just to show where I think we can continue to move. As you may know, I authored a gun violence prevention resolution that was adopted by school boards around the state. I was responsible for expanding LGBTQ protections in our nondiscrimination policy. I was very supportive of our solar on the schools pilot, bringing in student voices to work on sustainability issues. I worked on creating a pilot kitchen for scratch cooking, and now we're moving to have salad bars in all schools by the end of this calendar year. I was the force behind our civic engagement policy, the first in its nation to give our students an opportunity to have their voices heard outside of school walls during the school day. I worked to make menstrual products free and reform the dress code. So these are some of the many progressive things I've done. And I look forward to continuing that in the years to come.
Mr. Moon. Mr. Moon, you're on mute.
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jack. Thanks to everybody for being here today. There are five excellent candidates, and I'm glad to see a running. But we can only endorse three of them. You will most likely, as Mr. McDaniel stated, that you will most likely not see many differences in policy positions among the five of us. My campaign issues are on my website, and I hope that you will go and take a look. Among the five of us, however, there are differences in backgrounds and the kinds of skills that each of us can bring to the school board. I have twenty years of experience observing on the school board. Four years as a district board member and sixteen years as an at-large member. I have served as a chairman and vice chairman for three times each. I have served as a chairman of virtually all school board committees. Budget, governance, policy, personnel, audit facilities, and so forth. I know how to work on a budget, develop policies, and make tough decisions when needed. I'm a listener. I try not to jump to a conclusion without hearing everyone's perspective first. I believe in working collaboratively with the staff while holding them accountable. I'm a calm person and a steady hand. I came to the United States as an immigrant from Korea at the age of seventeen, back in nineteen seventy-four. I grew up in extreme poverty. Neither of my parents received much formal education, but they worked hard. And I studied hard. I went to college, became the first one to go to college, went to a law school, practicing attorney.
Fifteen seconds.
And decided to run for school board and eventually had an opportunity to serve for our students for twenty years. One of the biggest reasons I'm running.
Four.
Four board members, only four are running for reelection, and we need to have somebody like me with a long experience in this job. Thank you.
Mr. Munir.
Thank you, FCDC Education Committee and everyone. My name is Hamid Munir. I'm a long-term county resident and a parent of children in Fairfax County Public Schools. Who has worked to build a bright future for the children of Fairfax County through community leadership and organizational advocacy. And through consistent support for ensuring that all children have a quality education and have both their physical and mental well-being need met. Our teachers in classrooms must meet the needs of a student body that differ greatly from a decade ago. The success of our children in the classroom is dependent on having excellent teachers in the classroom. I would work with the board and administration to ensure that public education provides the pathway to success. For academic excellence to occur, our students and staff must feel safe, secure, and supported. I will make sure that the resources are in place to include physical infrastructure and mental health support. I am an immigrant American who has overcome many challenges to earn undergrad and master's degree from George Mason University and to become a successful IT professional. Fairfax County Public Schools gave me an education that put me on the path of success. And I'm grateful that my own children are now in Fairfax County Public Schools. I have spent my life focused on public education, health, and community well-being. I have volunteered to lead multiple organizations and initiatives for our community. I have been a leader in the PTA at the local, regional, and state level and national level. And also been a board member on Scan, WIC, and Celebrate Fairfax. The next four years will be critically important for the Fairfax County School Board. I will continue to advocate for our children, teacher, and our parent. I also want to address inequalities among our schools, working to build up schools to the highest quality levels. And I will be an unwavering advocate to ensuring that all our children, regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, economic status, gender, sexuality orientation, or need of special services, receive a first-rate education. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Webb.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks to the Education Committee for hosting this event. My name is Lawrence Webb, and I am a candidate for an at-large school board seat. In the climate that we're in right now, we need a school board that is ready to hit the ground day one. And with that, I am a candidate who is ready to hit the ground day one. Prior to moving into the county, I served twelve years in elective office, four years in the city of Falls Church, won the city council, as well as eight years as a member of the Falls Church City School Board, and I was chair of the board for two of those years. With many things accomplished there, those are things that I'm looking to bring that type of experience to Fairfax County. While I'm in Falls Church, I helped to build a brand-new high school. That high school was the first in the Commonwealth to incorporate gender-neutral facilities in that so that our LGBT students, trans, and gender nonperformances don't have to worry about where they're gonna go to the bathroom and making choices. We've made that choice for them so that they can go about their lives and live as free as they want to be. I've also worked very hard over the years within the LGBT community as a member of the Equality Virginia Board, working hard for the many advances that have been made over the last two years down in Richmond. I have experience both working with community as well as teachers and staff. We have to be a team in this current climate.
Thirty seconds.
We need to make sure that we are on one accord because we all do know that we are under attack. I will always fight to make sure that books are available for our students, age-appropriate. I will always make sure that the history that is taught to our student is not whitewashed. It is what actually happened in the world. And I will continue to fight and support our teachers because they are the ones who make sure that our students get the quality education. I look forward to this, and thank you all very much for the opportunity.
That's time. Thank you, Mr. Webb. We now move on to question number one. The question is, teacher and staff attrition have reached crisis levels nationwide. Additionally, the number of education majors graduating college has substantially decreased in past years. Prior to the pandemic, it was estimated that as many as thirty percent of teachers burn out and leave the profession in the first five years. What changes do you suggest to recruit and retain high-quality faculty and staff? Mr. McElveen, you're up first.
Thanks, Zach, for this important question, and I'm glad it's upfront because unequivocally, teachers are our most important asset, and we need to make sure that they're respected for the important work that they do in our system. This is a personal question for me. I have a wife who is a teacher. I have a father who retired from FCPS a couple of years ago after a long career. And I very much understand the myriad struggles that our teachers face on a daily basis. First and foremost, the thing we need to address is teacher compensation. El Young and I were there over the past decade as we brought our salaries up to market scale. Frankly, market scale is not good enough to attract the best, and we need to continue to invest in our teachers' salaries and benefits. Buildings improvements. We need to make sure that our teachers have a great place to teach, that's safe, healthy, positive environment for them. On those same lines, the working conditions that our teachers have to face are critical. We need to make sure that they have useful professional development, not that wastes a lot of time. They need unencumbered planning time, which is something that we've worked toward in the past on the board. And we need to make sure that they have the autonomy to teach, and we know that that's being fought against at the state level by our governor and others. So we need to stand up for that. We need to address class sizes, as always, and we need to make sure that our instructional programs are strong and that our teachers have input into them. Our strategic plan process currently provides an opportunity for that, but we also need to make sure that this strategic plan doesn't put more work on the plates of our already over-encumbered teachers.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you so much. As I stated in my opening statement, amongst five of us, there aren't that many differences in our policy positions. So I'm not going to repeat what Mr. McElveen has already stated. I agree with him on everything he said. But if I may add a couple more things, the first three years for teachers are the most critical years. And that's when they get really frustrated, they get burned out, they lose interest in teaching. And we need to better support our teachers in their first three years. We need to assign a mentor teacher to every new teacher for three years they can turn to as their mentor in not only delivering a classroom instruction, but also handling classroom management and also be able to better interact with the parents and administrators and even other teachers. I mean, that's where I think we need to put in more resources so that we could help our teachers to be able to stay with us. You know, be able to continue staying with us and teach our kids. As far as compensation is concerned, we're not even the leader in this Washington metropolitan area. We are somewhere in the middle that I'm not proud of that. We need to become a leader in Washington metropolitan area. Not only that, we need to elevate the discussion about teacher compensation to a national level. There has to be a true collaboration amongst federal government, which doesn't hold up, state government and local government. So that when you truly bring the level of compensation to the level of professionals, we'll be able to attract many more young, brightest, young people to come to teaching.
Mr. Munir.
I echo what my fellow candidate said. What I want to add is salaries and benefits are the largest part of the budget. I support effort to revise the Virginia LCI to reflect the cost to serve the increased population of children at risk in Fairfax County compared to other districts in the Commonwealth. I will advocate to increase funding at the federal, state, and local level and encourage investments in affordable housing by the Board of Supervisors. Post-COVID, our kids have come to school with more complex needs, and our staffing formula relates to the pre-COVID environment. And we need to lower class sizes and increase availability of mental and behavioral health support. We need to get rid of the support cap so that more funding goes directly to Fairfax County schools. We also, with the complexity of our students' body, need to ensure that our teachers have the necessary planning time they need. I will advocate that the three bargaining unit identified in the resolution achieve certification and begin the process of negotiations prior to the November elections. Once elected, I will ensure that future budgets are built around the needs of our staff and student outcomes. If individual groups of employees feel that they will better represent by additional bargain units, I support a process for identifying additional units while not undermining the current structure. A process of adding new units must be transparent and have the support of the employees. We also need to work on the issues of solving behavioral issues in the classrooms because the survey indicates that the teacher with the salaries are their number one also problem is to deal with the behavioral issues. And we need to focus on that as well and provide them resources to deal with that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. As we all stated, kind of this has been a building progression that we all are very similar in our thought. What I would add to this is on the recruiting side. It's working with the universities that we have across the DMV as well as across the Commonwealth that have great education programs that we go into those schools and not only just go into recruitment fairs, but actually partner with those schools to make sure that if there are opportunities to give student teaching opportunities in our schools so that those students can get experience with our system, with our administrators and staff, so that when graduation time comes, they can come in with experience. As Mr. Moon said, I do agree that partner teachers is going to be a critical part of making sure that new teachers coming in are ready to engage with students as well as learn our system. The other part that I would encourage, and I worked on this before in Falls Church, is making sure that we visit our HBCUs here in the Commonwealth and the immediate DMV area, as well as minority-serving institutions to go and make sure that we are recruiting the best and brightest of minority students, men and women, to come into our classrooms to give the opportunity for our students to see successful men and women who look like them in the classroom. This will give them an opportunity for some of our students who are coming from underrepresented areas to see that success. If we go into those schools, again, bring them into Fairfax County while they're student teaching so they can have experience and exposure to that. We also need to work hard and make sure that our veteran teachers are recognized and rewarded for that. We need to make sure that they know we value who they are and what they have done and make sure that compensation is a part of the process. But we also need to make sure that they are engaged in a way that they feel valued. And when they are bringing issues to us, we need to make sure that we incorporate those into conversations that we have. The collective bargaining agreement, I think, is a great tool that gives teachers and administrators a seat at the table, but we also need to make sure that we're expanding it beyond them and making sure others have that chance as well.
Mr. McDaniel.
Having the benefit of going last, I would say ditto to all the above. You know, I agree with everything that's been said, whether it's building pipelines, funding the Teacher Tomorrow program. You know, autonomy and planning time, all of these are things that have to be addressed, and that's on that policy side of the house. I completely agree with that. Let me touch on another side of the house, and that's going to be protecting teachers. Because at the end of the day, there's a reason that we're having a hard time recruiting teachers. Yes, we have the policy challenges, but there's also the challenge that when a teacher steps a pinky toe out of line, we have attorneys general, and we have governors, and we have politicians that go after them, and they're on Fox News, and their spouses are docs, their kids are docs. We have to be a team. We have to protect our teachers. I agree with the policy side of the house. I wanted to bring this up because when I talk to teachers, when I talk to parents, and when I talk to staff members, I hear this as well as the policy side of the house. We've got to be a team, and that's not just a team as the school board. That is a one Fairfax team, one FCPS team. This is not us versus them, school board versus teacher, you know, teacher versus principal. This is one team, one united front, protecting public education, educating kids, and pushing forward our Fairfax values.
Thank you. With that, we will be moving on to question number two. A recent special education study highlighted a number of issues within special education in FCPS, highlighting that existing inequities are amplified for students with disabilities. There are major disparities in test scores between students with disabilities and their peers and students without disabilities. And students with disabilities are three times more likely to experience in-school suspensions. How would you begin to rectify the situation? We'll start with Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Jack. Thanks for the question. Then neither current situation is acceptable to me and to all of us in Fairfax County. Let me first to say that our teachers work hard. But even among the teachers, special education teachers do have the hardest jobs. So whoever is teaching with, whoever is teaching special education students, I really want to give my best wishes and I applaud them. You know, having said that, having said that, they need a lot more help to be able to teach special education students. Even though we've been, school system has been trying to reduce the student-teacher ratio for special education classes as much as possible. It's not at an optimal level at this point. I know there's a shortage of special education teachers. I also understand that there is a constraint with the budget. However, for special education students, they need smaller class size and they need more teachers' help in the classroom. You know, if we cannot hire more regular special education teachers, at least we can provide more assistance to work with special education teachers in the classroom. As far as suspension is concerned, I do not think suspension helps even improving the behaviors. Suspension definitely does not help improve your student's academic achievement. So suspension itself is not the answer to deal with student behavior. I think we need to provide more training for everyone, starting with administrators and hearing officers, even the classroom teachers, including general education teachers about root causes of some of the behaviors being exhibited by students in the classroom. And rather than handing down suspension, we need to find a better way to support them.
Mr. Munir.
Yeah, I did know what Mr. Moon said, and sorry about that. Yeah, I didn't mute myself. I was gonna say, I did know what Mr. Moon said. We are all probably on the same same side on this issue. It's a very critical issue in our county. But it has been proven repeatedly that all students benefit from inclusive classroom. Without proper resources, this increases the stress for our teachers. I support smaller classrooms, increase planning time, then potentially more class aids, and increase support, including stipends for special education teachers, which involved in the IEP process. And we need transparency in our suspension policies and report systems. Those are the few things that I want to add, and you know, again, I did know what Mr. Moon said on this.
Mr. Webb.
So again, we're going to be very similar in our responses, but I do think that this is a very important area that we need to work continually on to make sure that we are giving the support to our special education teachers as well as the parents of those students who are coming into this particular environment. We also need to work to make sure that there are students who are coming from the the areas of disadvantaged families who who parents feel that they don't have a voice when it comes to asking questions when they have students who are in these particular areas. We need to make sure that we are addressing their needs, and it's sometimes addressing their needs that we're going into their communities to give them opportunities where they are in their own space to address some of their concerns with their students with disabilities. We also need to continue to work and look at additional ways of disciplinary areas. These students, in many cases, are not doing this just to be a problem. Sometimes they have other issues. So we need to make sure that we are reducing class sizes, make sure that we are giving opportunities for additional training for our teachers and staff of how to address these concerns with our students. We also need to continue to work and make sure that we are addressing students where they are and their parents and making sure that those needs are being addressed on a daily basis.
Mr. McDaniel.
You. Myself. So sorry, if you hear someone asking for cheese sticks in the background, that's my daughter. It's snack time. So I generally agree with your things been said. A couple of things that I did want to bring up. I think we need to kind of build this conversation around the kid themselves. And that's getting a, we need to have a better, I would say, continuum of services and more options around that. We also need to have meaningful inclusion, you know, idle hands. When we have idle hands, we have these issues. So engaging kids repeatedly throughout the day, bringing them more into the fold, having that continuum. You know, trauma-informed care, I agree on teaching on the teacher ratio, how that we need to have, you know, more teachers to the kids. And something else that I've talked about with parents and with teachers is creating a, for lack of a better phrase, an ombudsman-type position where it helps where that person is responsible for developing communication, whether it's around IEPs or these behavioral challenges. But really, an advocate for the family, an advocate for the child, and an advocate for the teacher that can pull in all these different resources and build these support structures around the kids. I think that's missing in the system, and that's something that I would hopefully be able to solve.
Mr. McElveen.
Building on what Kyle just said, one of the things Mr. Moon and other board members worked to create in the last board was an ombudsman position. And under that ombudsman, there is a special education ombudsman. But I agree with Kyle that we need to strengthen that work. We face an extremely difficult situation in FCPS on issues of special education. We face countless lawsuits and federal complaints. But the positive side of that is that it's been a very important learning process, whether it's seclusion and restraint or other issues. The system has kind of learned how to respond and address these issues over time. Now I would point to the work of the current board, hiring the first neurodiverse, neurodiversity specialist, the first dyslexia specialist, and twice-exceptional specialist. That's important work. But going back to what needs to be done, we have incredible resources, incredible specialized schools. Um, but uh going back to what needs to be done, um, we have incredible resources, incredible specialized schools. But we need to look at the opportunity to create specialized schools or academies um that could accommodate twice exceptional students. Um, and be places where they can blossom. Um, we, we have. It's not only um twice exceptional, but also profoundly gifted students. We need to make sure they have environments. And ultimately, as everyone else has said, this comes down to creating inclusive environments in all of our schools. And making sure that we do have the needs-based funding uh that goes to schools with their greatest needs.
Thank you. We will be moving on to question number three. Question is, LGBTQ plus students and faculty are, are under attack nationwide. And the attacks are accelerating and expanding, just as F C P S policies are evolving to be more inclusive. How do you propose to uphold and expand protections? So LGBTQ plus students, faculty and staff can safely bring their authentic selves to the learning environment? We will start with Mr. Manier.
Uh, having come from a community that is often marginalized, I know how important it is to support marginalized communities such as LGBTQ. I will fight to protect the rights of every student and staff to be part of our community. Allowing them to be their authentic self and see themselves in our curriculum and our libraries. And ensure that every child is treated with dignity. I believe that if rigidity against one group is allowed, then it will spread to others. As Democrats, we need to stand up against bullies and that's our stand. Every child's dignity and ability to be recognized as their authentic self must be protected. I will work with the superintendent to ensure that students' pronouns are respected. And private spaces are available in restrooms and locker rooms facilities. So that students may access those facilities that correspond to their gender identity. Thank you.
Mr. Webb.
This is an area that is of particular interest to me because I am a part of that community. Um, that I have worked very hard to make sure that. Students in today's climate have a much better experience than I did of, of growing up and experiencing. Um, I will continue to, to do the fight that I have done for over a decade. Of the work that has been done to make sure that our trans students and non-gender non-conforming students are recognized. And that we continue to find ways to include them so they can live their authentic selves. Uh, we have expanded uh in this non-discrimination statements, gender identity. We need to continue to make sure that we expand wherever we can more to protect those students. And we need to stand up to the bullies who are coming after those students. Uh, Richmond has given us many things over the last two years, but Richmond right now, under the current leadership of Governor Youngkin. Are trying to take those away from us and we cannot allow that to happen. I will stand up and I'm sure as many of our, these candidates, we all will stand up to make sure that. Our LGBTQ students are protected as well as our LGBTQ plus. Faculty and staff, we will be that wall to make sure that they are able to do what they need to do. If they are attacked, we will stand up and defend them. I have done this for a number of years and will always stand up and defend our students to make sure that they can walk the, the lives that they wanna do. And not have to be, live a life that they have to be ashamed of. Live proud and be who you are because that will give them the opportunities to succeed in life.
Mr. McDaniel.
Sure. Um, no, I, I, I really wanna echo what Lawrence said also as a, as a member of the community myself, and I think to answer this question. Uh, you know, we have to recognize that actions, not just words, are central to making F C P S a truly welcoming, open, inclusive. Uh, community for, for, for members of this family, so to speak. Um, you know, another key is that we have to openly uh and regularly um. Uh, celebrate and recognize the community at large. I mean, they're, they're not just a footnote. Uh, and they need to be, their identity is intrinsically a part of who they are and, and that needs to be recognized and celebrated. And whether it's in curriculums, you know, student activities, uh, creating safe spaces, we need to affirmatively uh recognize. And include the LGBTQ communities. And finally, to Lawrence's point, uh, we have to protect them because they are issue number one on the Republican mind right now. Coming out of Richmond and that's gonna take a work by our, our, our school board, by our teachers, by our staff, by everyone. To, to kind of wrap them in love and acceptance and protect them. Um, anti-LGBTQ sentiments and bullying will be identified, addressed, and it won't be, it won't be tolerated. Uh, and that's, you know, all these things we have to do uh to, to build this safe and, and welcoming space. I look forward to doing that on the school board.
Mr. McElveen.
Uh, like everyone else, this is an issue very, very close to my heart. Um, you know, we. Uh, when I say we, uh, Mr. Moon and I have really been on the front lines of this issue for, for many, many years. Um, in two thousand fifteen, as many will recall, as soon as the attorney general gave us. The opportunity to expand our non-discrimination protections um uh to uh to in- include. Um, uh, the LGBTQ community, um, we, we moved on that as quickly as possible. I put that proposal before the board. We passed it. Uh, and we did so amid a national climate that was um very. Um, very hostile uh on these issues. And so. The record shows that, that I'll be there for this community. Um, I have been and I will continue to be. Looking forward though, uh, we need to make sure that not only our students are, are um from this community are supportive, but also our staff. Um, and we know uh through studies from the Trevor Project and others that suicidal ideation among this community. Um, is extremely high, fifty to sixty percent have contemplated suicide. Um, we need uh to provide additional so- social supports. Um, for the LGBTQ community and have mental health professionals that are um not just focused on all of our students, but in particular. Uh, on this community. If others, as others have mentioned, we're facing an environment now that is potentially even more hostile than the one we faced in twenty twelve. With trans rights under attack um from Florida to the Midwest and, and certainly they're, they're coming uh at this issue in Virginia. So we need a school board that's going to be strong um and stand, stand strongly with this community.
Mr. Mary.
Uh, thank you. Uh, you know, you have heard from Mr. McElveen that Mr. McElveen and I were on the front line. You know, fighting for the rights of our LGBTQ students and staff members. In two thousand fifteen, that in that year. He, the biggest campaign issue at the time for the school election was on LGBTQ. And Mr. McElveen and I, with the rest of my, a, you know, Democratic school of the colleagues, we stood firm on our belief and policy position. That no matter what the students backgrounds are, all of our students have a right to enjoy. Most comfortable, non-discriminatory, a learning environment. And I'm gonna go even further back. In two thousand fourteen, I was the one who made a motion to include the sexual orientation. As part of our non-discrimination policy. And I stood firm. And I was severely criticized by a lot of people, even from members of my own community. And in two thousand fifteen, after we passed including gender identity in non-discrimination policy. Which was Mr. McElveen's motion, I seconded the motion that for many months. Our boardrooms and auditorium at the school of the meeting were packed with the people so hostile to us. And there was a gentleman who was picking on every meeting. I don't know why he was just picking me up, picking me up, but he did, but I stood firm on my ground. I support the rights of LGBTQ students and staff and it has to come from the top, school board. Making sure that we take consistent stance on this one without ever wavering. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Moon. We will now move on to question number four. The question is, mental health has become an increasingly important issue among students. Faculty and the entire F C P S community, especially in the wake of the COVID nineteen pandemic. How do you propose to expand and bolster support for mental health throughout the school system? Mr. Webb, we'll start with you.
So with this question, um, I think we've, uh, the county has made a, a strong effort of providing the telehealth. Counseling that they have, are now currently providing to students, but we need to expand that. We need to make sure that our. Faculty and staff are included in that because we've all seen the challenges that of the mental health area for. For not only just our students itself, but their families as well. It's been a challenge. I work in higher education. I've been doing that for over twenty years now. And I have seen that with students who have started their freshman year of college. Um, that those challenges are there as well. That students pre uh twenty twenty uh coming into school. They were vibrant, they were involved, they were active and engaged. Now you see students who are coming in because of being isolated for that two-year period during. Um, the pandemic, that they are still currently a little bit more isolated. They are not engaging their, their fellow students. As well as getting involved in clubs and organizations that at the pace that they once did. The more opportunities that we give for them to express themselves, get the counseling that they need. Um, I think the better we will see our, our students and staff being able to, to reengage. Back once they, they did hard to the pandemic. Uh, we need to also make sure that we continue to build on that and that means bringing in more counselors.
Thirty seconds.
The, the ratio right now is not acceptable. We need to make sure that we're bringing in more counsel so they, those needs can be addressed. Even more so and drill down even closer to our students and staff to make sure that we are making, that they are gonna be successful. And we need to make sure that these things are addressed um on a more one-on-one basis with our students and staff.
Mr. McDaniel.
Um, so uh, we, we had mental health challenges prior to COVID. And then we had COVID and then COVID exacerbated those challenges to nth degree. Uh, so I, I think we're, we're all teachers, parents, students. Uh, are, are, as we have emerged from COVID, we are suffering from COVID trauma and, and a little bit of PTSD. So that presents a unique challenge. There's some low-hanging fruit that we can go after that I, I've talked about. Uh, peer mentor. Um, you know, I, I've kind of said, just talk. So kids, get kids talking to kids. If you see your friend and he's there, he or she has not been. Acting quite themselves for a couple of weeks. Hey, what's going on? Let's talk about this. Um, i- i- for our teachers, it's uh looking at the health insurance coverage for mental health and seeing if we can increase mental health coverage. Um, but I think the key to a lot of this in the short term is gonna be de-stigmatizing mental health, especially amongst the students. You know, being pulled out of class, a guy in the counselor's office, that's a barrier to getting mental health coverage. So if we can start solving some of these challenges. Through some of these low-hanging fruits, getting kids talking to each other, getting more counselors in the schools, that's one way to do it. In the long term, uh, it's gonna require more funding from our federal, state and, and county partners. It's, I call that a vertical policy model. With a wraparound service delivery. So we have all levels of government and nonprofit world involved. And we have to have wraparound services at our school because the challenge with mental health is it doesn't start when the child walks into the school. And it doesn't end when the child leaves the school. This is not an isolated, you know, school building challenge. It is a twenty-four seven challenge. And it's the, it's the kid, it's the teacher, it's the parents, it's, it's the home life, it's the weekend life, it's a true. Uh, wraparound challenge that requires a wraparound service delivery model. And I would be lying if I didn't say that that is going to be a big hairy audacious goal to solve that. But if we can put our heads together and work together as a team, we can start chipping away at it.
Mr. McElveen.
When, when I first took office in, in two thousand twelve, um, it was a very difficult year for the community. Because we had just undergone a spate of student suicides. Uh, and many will remember that um, that that was a major issue in that campaign. Um, and we did a lot of work um in those initial years to build up our, our capacity for addressing mental health issues. We created an annual mental health and wellness conference that continues to this day and is a very powerful uh force in our community. Uh, we created the crisis text program so that uh students were just one text message away um from, from a mental health professional. If they had suicidal ideation or just needed someone to talk to. We, we pushed for stress less weeks in school. Um, and we hired a record number of, of psychologists and social workers for our schools. Now, that being said, that's, that's not enough. We need to make sure that um those programs are embedded in every school. Um, and um, uh, Mr. Webb alluded to the um telehealth work and I applaud, I applaud the current school board for, for moving in that direction. Um, there are limited hours to that, uh, which is unfortunate. Um, which is why I think that we need to have an opportunity for um every single student, every single staff member in our system to have. Um, have one-on-one counseling um at some point in the year. Uh, and um, that's certainly something that I'm gonna be pushing for as a school director.
Mr. Mary.
Uh, if I may, uh, just a couple more things to what has been already stated by, by other candidates. I think all, you know, detection of all the warning signs, that's going to be very critical. In preventing a, a tragedies that may occur to, you know, our, our, our students. Uh, and those all, you know, all the warning signs must be detected, must be detected by our parents at home. And all others when our students are in school. In order for our parents to be able to detect those early warning signs. That school system may be able to provide a more education and training for our parents. And all those others in the, in the school buildings so that we can prevent when we can. And rather than waiting until things bad happen, try to deal with it. That's one. And secondly, uh, this, uh, Mr. Ryan McElveen mentioned about. Uh, you know, school board previously having provided more psychologists and social workers. Yes, we had. However, we haven't gone enough. For example, as far as. A, a counselor, I'm gonna mention counselor at this time, is a concern. They'll look at their student to counselor ratio. In middle school. Uh, we provide only one counselor, up to three hundred twenty students. In high schools, it's up to two hundred ninety-five. I understand that they are still below state standards of three hundred twenty-five. But however, three twenty and twenty nine, two hundred ninety-five, that's way too many students for one counselor to be able to help. We're not be able to find a way to provide one counselors and psychologists and social works to, workers. To help our students to deal with their mental stress. One, another thing that I may wanna, uh, our colleagues, uh, to engage is to work with the college admissions. I see a lot of high school students, I teach Sunday school, I teach ninth graders. And even from ninth grade, I see these students worrying about college admissions. And so packing their schedule with so many A Ps and difficult courses. And so many other activities. They have no time to enjoy and just relax. We need to engage our college admission offices and to find out whether there's a way to reduce mental stress on the part of our high school kids.
Mr. Manier.
Yeah, one year prior to pandemic started, I wanted to bring in a mental health program through P T A to one of our local schools. And the principal was against it, saying that, oh, we do not have that problem in our school. Oh, boy, was he wrong. But anyways, I fought back. We brought the program despite the opposition and I'm glad to report that. Since then, it has been an yearly program in that school. Um, and now that everybody is aware of this issue. So I'm, I'm glad that we're focusing on this. I will also promote programs that support mental health and awareness in schools. We need to hire more psychologists, social workers and counselors. Although progress has been made in increasing staffing in this area, it's still not enough. A particular concern is the recent uh disenrollment of Medicaid and availability of mental health professionals. We need to invest in preventive care, preventive care, teaching our students and skills necessary to navigate an ever-changing world. When we identify risks, we should be providing interventions and working with the county to develop long-term care plans for those uh in crisis. I have taken cognitive training and encourage others to do so as well as mental health first aid. I'm optimistic about the use of Hazel and it's also needed to be available at our middle school as well. Mental health screening should be done systematically and results made available to parents and students when a need is identified. We need to work with the county to provide services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manier. We'll be returning to our schoolwork candidates after this quick break. In the meantime, I'd like to introduce our Democratic candidates for the Northern Virginia Soil and Water Conservation, Conservation District. Candidates, I'd like to remind you of our rules. You may not endorse or attack one another and we ask that you remain both on topic and on time. Each of you are allotted two minutes to introduce yourself to the audience. Ms. Bearcat, you're up first.
Hello, thank you so much for having me and for organizing this event. I'm Dana Bearcat and I'm running for soil and water. I believe that it's extremely important for first off to address what is soil and water. Many people don't know. And I really hope to be able to educate everyone with Chris and Rhonda as to what it is that they do. Also, for those who do know what it is, they don't think it's important. How are you gonna live without land, how are you gonna live without water? These are fundamental things that we need to know more about, understand, and be able to have the uh the information to understand the programs that are available. So many things that we pay for, we don't know that the soil and water is actually, they have grants for these things. More importantly, this is a fundamental human right and that's why I'm running. I really hope that I can have everyone's support and thank you so much for having me.
Miss Bitterly?
Hi, I'm Rhonda Bitterly and I'm a candidate for the Soil and Water Conservation District Board. And like Dana was saying, uh not a lot of people know about what the Conservation District does and they are set up to help homeowners or property owners deal with issues on their property like erosion and sedimentation and they help Fairfax County address these issues too eh eh to include things like flooding and sedimentation control, that type of thing. And um I would like to be involved in getting the word out, like Dana said, about the assistance that that is available to everybody. I've got an extensive environmental background, I've got a master's degree in soil and water science and I've had the um opportunity to work on, for example, I was part of a geothermal commercialization team that looked at process heat requirements to evaluate whether businesses would be able to use geothermal energy. And energy issues is something that the Soil and Water Conservation District Board is looking at right now and I might be able to offer a different perspective, I know that solar is being looked at as uh an option and there are other options too. Uh I've had the opportunity to work in domestic and international agriculture and that includes the environmental effects of agricultural practices and it also includes biological control of agricultural pests and biological control may offer um a partial solution to the control of trappa, which is an invasive species here in Fairfax County in our surface waters. It might not be viable short term, but it's something to be watched. Um I've had experience with the National Academy of Sciences and their Water Science and Technology Board reports and um with the office, uh with the Environmental Protection Agency and the Hazard Ranking System updates to that. And so in my professional career, I've had the opportunity to participate in meetings, people would invite me to their meetings, even if I wasn't part of their team because of the unique perspective I'm often able to offer and also I'm known for asking insightful questions, I would like to bring all of this, uh Soil and Water Conservation District.
Mister Kerner?
He's Zach, I'm Chris Kerner, currently the um incumbent director on the Northern Virginia Soil and Water Conservation District and running for reelection. I have a forty-year career and I, Zach, I don't see my video, am I on? It says you have. Okay, hi, I'm Chris Kerner, um I've got a forty-year career as a professional engineer and environmental scientist with international experience in the groundwater protection and cleanup, as well as experience developing sustainability practice. I've led in a nationwide environmental panels on value engineering and expert panels across the country and I'm honored to be a diplomat of the American Academy of Environmental Engineers. I'm the former chair of the local Sierra Club Great Falls Group and also formerly chaired the Fairfax County Chesapeake Bay Preservation Orange Committee. I've spent my entire career working to protect the environment and have developed some critical technical expertise to help improve the quality of life in the county. One thing I'd like to do is recognize the services of Jerry Peters and Monica Bilger, current directors who are not running for reelection. With our staff, I've known many of our our district staff for over twenty years and value not only their technical expertise but their altruistic values towards helping others in the community. They do a lot of good work that many folks never hear about. As Rhonda mentioned, that they um disperse a number of small grants to support conservation practices. We've got a committee to try and help eradicate the invasive species, um trappa or um water chestnut that is centered in the Fairfax and Prince William area and could do a lot of damage to the eelgrass community on the bay. Um the staff needs a very good solid board that works well together as a team to support them. Again, my name is Chris Kerner, I'd be honored if you would endorse me to help the district continue as good stewards for the environment, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Kerner, and thank you to all of our Soil and Water Board candidates, I'd also like to add that there's another candidate running, Mary Pullet, but she cannot make it today. We'll now be returning to our schoolwork candidates with some questions from our audience. The first question will go to Mister McDaniel. The question is, how do you propose to address gun violence in the school setting without further further traumatizing teachers and students and without and without increasing the school-to-prison pipeline, Mister McDaniel, you're up.
Good, um that's a excellent question, uh and it's one that I I talk a lot about. Let me start by saying what I don't want to do, and you hit the nail on the head, whoever asked this question is, I don't want to traumatize our kids. What did what was the deciding factor of me running for this office was last November around Thanksgiving timeframe. Amazon started trying to sell me Christmas presents for our kids and one of the Christmas presents Amazon suggested was a bulletproof backpack. Um you know, May twenty-fourth of last year, May twenty-fifth, I dropped my my Alice off at preschool and that was the day after the Uvalde shooting and I thought, what if that's the last time I drop her off? Um this is the reality of life for millions upon millions upon millions of American parents, this is a uniquely American problem and anybody that says otherwise is just not living in a world of facts. Um I don't support metal detectors, I don't want my first grader to have to walk through metal detectors, I I don't support uh turning our schools into glorified fortresses and I don't support dumping more police officers into the hallways of our schools to in which would by default, it would increase that school-to-prison pipeline. Uh to solve this, A, mental health, mental health, mental health, that is that big hairy audacious goal we talked about, that is key factor number one. Uh the second thing is, this is about lobbying Richmond and lobbying federal lawmakers for common sense gun reforms, we have to have red flag laws, we have to have uh uh regulations and training and all these types of things that we've been pushing for, we have to put those in place. Um and it's it's working with our law enforcement partners, so we don't have the disaster that happened in Uvalde where you have police officers not properly trained that were standing outside while nineteen kids and two students and and two teachers were murdered, um this is a big issue to me, I'm very passionate about it. Um you know, I don't believe in this nonsense that, well, it's not a school board issue because, well, you know, the school can't do anything about guns, that's completely false and if you put me on the school board, I am going to be very loud, very vocal and I will push for common sense things that do not harm our kids.
Mister McElveen?
I agree that this is an important question, like Kyle, this is this is very important to me and it's something that I've I've been working on for for a number of years. Um when when we were on the board, uh we um essentially after the Parkland uh situation in um twenty eighteen, uh I wrote the resolution on behalf of the board um uh speaking to the community and to our lawmakers uh about um what that meant meant to us and um how we should best funnel our advocacy and what happened is uh school board associations from around the country contacted me and asked if they could use that um in their local communities and and many of them did. Um so that's one of the ways uh you know, we've made Fairfax County a national leader on this issue. But this is an issue that we can never stop thinking about, uh and the current board has um uh in the process of another audit of our s- uh security system, but one of the things that came out of our previous audit that that we did not um implement that I want to focus on is ensuring that our exterior glass on school buildings is fortified. We've seen that's been an issue in in other uh crises. Um like others, I oppose arming our teachers and milita- militarizing our schools. Um I'm a supporter of teaching gun safety and security at all levels. Um and as I mentioned previously on the mental health conversation, we need to have mental health check-ins with every student and staff member throughout the year. Um other thing, other achievements that we made was um in twenty nineteen uh creating the plan to secure all door locks, uh all vestibules in our schools. Um that that work is still ongoing, unfortunately, it wasn't completed during the pandemic. Um that's something we can look back on as a case study of of uh how not to implement um changes effectively. Uh but there's there's much more work to be got done, I'm sure the audit will give us um some good ideas going forward as well.
Mister Moon?
Thank you, Jack, uh titoing what has been already stated by Mister McDaniel and Mister McElveen, if I may add just a couple more things. The access to the building should be tightly secured, that's something Mister McElveen has alluded to. Uh but it has to be also very well monitored. I don't think we do a as good a job in monitoring than securing. And also, I want to support putting in more external cameras in the areas, especially you know, so there, you know, places like uh between trailers and modulars to the main building. Those are the areas can be, it can be easily, much more easily broken into by the perpetrators. And so those area needs to be monitored uh more closely. As far as not traumatizing our students concerned, I don't want to traumatize our students, but having said that we have to be prepared, meaning that in case, in case something bad happens, people in the school need to know how to, how to, how to eh eh how to deal with the situation to be able to protect our students and adults as much as possible and those drills have to be run. And lastly, our te- our parents need to be reminded and educated about the gun. If they can do a better job of keeping their guns, if they do, if they have a guns at home that will reduce a lot of risk that may be eh that may be posed by students using, bringing those guns to schools.
Mister Manier?
Um I hope you guys remember a few months ago when the UVA incident happened and my daughter was there and as a parent, what I have gone through uh firsthand experience and not knowing what the situation is, it's it's horrific. And I I hope and wish that no parent should go through these um the these situations. But in these situations, what I have to say is we need to be proactive and not reactive. There's a safety audit underway and I will make sure that the recommendation of the audits are implemented. Additionally, I recognize that we must improve communication with parents about the school safety plans. I will work to ensure that the there is a fidelity in the implementation of safety plans when they must be utilized. Anytime safety plans are utilized, there needs to be a debriefing to access if they worked. I will promote behavioral and mental health programs such as social emotional learning which foster a positive climate and prevent violence, bullying, harassment, substance substance abuse and and hate speech in school. I support all programs like Free to Succeed of Children, Teacher Mentors, Healthy Minds, Trauma Inform, et cetera. Where necessary, target interventions and risk uh restorative justice practices should be utilized, thank you.
Mister Webb?
With all of my fellow candidates have said, um I fully agree, we must, this must be top of mind now that with instances that have been happening across the country, we must be uh proactive instead of reactive. Um with the security audit that's going on now, that's that's a step one to make sure whatever recommendations are brought forward, that we make sure that we have the funding in place to to implement those. Uh we need to continue and what had started with the security vestibules of securing access into buildings needs to, the funding needs to be put in place to complete that project. It's very important that we control access to our buildings at all costs, making sure all doors are checked regularly, making sure that security patrols are regular, but in particular, as Mister Moon said with the trailers that we have on our schools, that those are patrolled, cameras added. We need to do all we can to make sure that we are protecting our students and staff. We also need to make sure that when we hear things, we take that seriously. Be it coming from a student who may have heard something and brought it to a teacher or staff members' attention, we need to address that particular concern. Um that is part of the issue that I saw within the Newport News situation. People were telling uh staff what they had heard about this particular student, but no one really addressed that. We have to, when we, as you hear, see something, something, we have to do that. Uh we need to make sure that we also, again, implement mental health counseling when needed. If those services are in place to help our students who may be struggling, we need to make sure that we are doing all we can to react and to prevent these situations from happening.
Thank you, we'll be moving on to the second question from the audience. The question is, quote, if you are opposed to using suspension suspensions for discipline, what would you propose to be done when students inevitably violate SR and R rules? Mister McElveen, you're up first.
So um pre- previously, our our board had had done a lot of work on this, as I alluded to prior. One of the concerns um after twenty twelve was that suspensions were were leading to destructive uh student outcomes. And so um one of the things that, and I would like to particularly laud um board member Megan McLaughlin for her work on this over this year, over the years um was to make sure that students uh could be redirected into into other programs where they would um eh engage with with uh the students that they they may have um harmed or otherwise so that they could over overcome the issues without uh losing more school by being uh on suspension. Um one of the things we saw from this this work is that there's been a um a a reduction of recidivism uh and uh it's it's been a positive outcome for our system. Um that work needs to be expanded and uh that's certainly something that I would push for.
Mister Moon?
Thank you, Jack, I think Mister McElveen might have been alluding to restorative justice uh system that the school board wanted to implement. I will continue supporting restorative justice in in meeting out disciplinary consequences uh for disciplinary infractions. Suspension, I am not going to completely rule that out, however, that's going to be the last resort. We need to, we need to address the causes behind students infractions and see whether they, there's a way to deal with a solving the problems students may be having. Whether students is getting frustrated in the peer relationship, then counselors will need to sit down with the students and come to a resolution. Whether students are eh acting out because he or she is simply getting bold in classroom, either not understanding what is going on in the classroom or are just just, you know, already under having understood everything that was in the classroom just doesn't know how to spend his time in the classroom eh much more productively. So those looking at the root causes, causes and addressing to serve eh eh ameliorate those causes should be the first priority, rather than meeting out the punishments and suspension should be the last resort.
Mister Manier?
Um sure, uh actually, the fact is that post-COVID, there are significant concerns about discipline as some of our children returning to school face challenges of self self-regulations and exhibit poor choices as bullying, fighting and classroom interruptions. Um we know that many of these behaviors are the result of trauma that they face due to COVID closures and challenges resulting from family membership, being ill, losing jobs and possibility of food insecurity. Oftentimes, poor behaviors is a sign that these students are calling for help. Teachers need to be supported in creating a safe space for all. I support the emphasis on social emotional learning so that our students gain the essential life skill of learning working and living in the community settings. In instances where parents have been called multiple times about a student's behavior, I support a policy of utilizing a functional behavior assessment and implementation of the behavior intervention plan, working closely with their parents, thank you.
Mister Webb?
To this as a uh as a major issue that's going on, we need to address some of the concerns that are going on. I would not necessarily be a fan of suspension. Out of school suspension in particular would be of last resort. I think we must first make the effort to. Identify what's, what's causing many of the problems. Talking with many teachers, there has been an increase of disciplinary issues that have been occurring in the school. That must be addressed and many of these are. Coming back from COVID and that isolation and mental health challenges that they, they, many of our students have been having during that time. So first, we must address, again, work on the mental health portions of it first to see. What can be done both in school and supporting families at home of how to address the, some of these issues. When it comes to. Issues of, of safety, we then must address those in a way to make sure that all of our students. And staff are safe in the buildings and their learning environments are safe. We, that's when we look at ways to potentially address those. I would be one to look into in-school suspension as a way to not necessarily take a child out of. Their learning environment, but it continues to have them still getting that opportunity to, to learn. But addressing a discipline issue.
Thirty seconds.
As we continue to look at other ways, we, we, to do this, we must bring everyone to the table to address this, including families. Talking with administrators and staff and see what's the best solution to, to bring down these, these disciplinary issues that have skyrocketed. Over the last year, they have to be addressed because it is a issue that's causing problems in the classroom that is taken away from. Teachers' time to educate students and we got, we must address these issues.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't want to, excuse me. I don't want to belabor the point, but from policy perspective, I would, I would generally agree with all the above, but let me tell you a quick story. When I was in fourth grade in public schools in Mississippi, I did something, I don't remember what I did now, and I was suspended for a week. I was sent home with a stack of textbooks and a reading list and a work list. Of course, you know, parents were working, so I, I was generally. You know, with, with grandma and grandpa or whomever and left to my own devices and none of the work got done. So low and behold, as I came back the following Monday. I was behind a week and it took me a long time to catch up. So, you know, I, I understand that, that. In dealing with these various disciplinary issues, we have to have various. The school system has, has various tools at its disposal to use and to deter and to reinforce good behavior. So generically, I, I, I would, suspension is not a, a first tool. It is a tool used much farther down the road, but Mr. Moon hit on what I think is the key here. Which is addressing the root cause and restorative justice. And if we can focus our disciplinary policies through that lens. Through both of those lenses of A, let's stop this before it becomes a potential suspension issue. Stop from getting to that level. And B, let's look at discipline and those consequences through that restorative lens where it's not, you know. Today, we have a carrot and stick model. We either punish or reward. And I much more gen, tend to lean towards and embrace that reward, that restorative side of, of things. And if we can stay focused on that, I, I think that we're going to get a long way with dealing with some of these post-COVID disciplinary breakdowns that we're having.
Thank you. We will be moving on to the third question from our audience. The question is. Please explain the measures that you will take to control and optimize the use of the FCPS budget. Mr. Moon, we'll start with you.
I mean, I had dealt with budget development for twenty, twenty times, I guess. And in all these years, what school board does is first is such a, is such, is such, it's a priority. And give those priority to the superintendent to develop and propose a budget for the school board, for school board's deliberation and decision. I mean, that's great. That's a very prudent approach. That's the approach I'm gonna take. But however, uh, if something that I may want to add is that. And when school board sets a pri, a priority. Uh, school board needs to engage the community. And hear from the community as to what the community desires, school system's budget priorities should be. Those, a lot of times, those conversations engaging the community. Do not happen before school board directing superintendent to develop the budget. That's the one thing I'm gonna do. And as we a struggle with a providing a better compensation to, uh. Our well-deserving teachers. We need to find a way. A, uh, we need to find, we need to, we need to try harder to find more efficiencies in our operation. Unfortunately. About ninety percent of our budget goes into paying for people. As far as the discretionary spending is concerned, there is very little. So there isn't too, you know, a lot of money that we can save. From the board efficiency, even having said that, when you are dealing with thirty point five billion dollars of operating budget. Even the small percentage of that is a large amount that can be rerouted to a classroom instruction. That is what I want to do.
Mr. Manier.
Yeah, coming from a project management experience, uh, on, on budgetary issues, I'm hundred percent agreeing with, uh, Mr. Moon on that. So the priorities are set by the administration, but those should not be taken as, as set on stone, right? We, we need to have conversation with our communities and as a parent. You know, we might not see the priorities at the same level as the administration sees it, but we need to come to the middle ground, but there has to be. Hearings that needs to happen and as a board members and a, as public servants, we need to make sure that our public is heard on those budgetary issues and. We reprioritize based on our, uh, that what we hear from different regions and, and, and from the community. Thank you.
Mr. Webb.
Agree with what's being said. Um, I have the unique experience of sitting on both sides of both the. City council of being the folks who are appropriating the funds to a school board. Uh, as well as being one who's helping to develop that school board budget. We must figure out a way to, to both work, looking for efficiencies. Making sure that we are using everyone, every dollar that we have in the most effective way, uh, as possible. Number one, making sure that we are compensating our, our teachers and staff to the best we can. Making sure that we are looking for ways to cut budgets, uh, and to cut, cut spending. To make sure that the, most of our funding and spending is towards our students and staff. We also need to make sure that as we go through this process, uh, that we are. We know that our taxpayers are the ones who are funding the, the majority of the school spending. And they have to be a part of that. I've always been a proponent of making sure that we include the public as early as we can in the process. Be it. Putting the budget together and once a budget is proposed by the superintendent, making sure that they are part of budget hearings as we move forward, um, before it's approved. The other big part of it is, um, within budget dollars. We don't get our fair share coming from Richmond. Uh, I have for years been going to Richmond. Lobbying the general assembly about the LCI Local Composite Index, which dictates how much each individual school district gets. Fairfax County does not get its fair share. We, we sent a lot to Richmond, but we don't get a lot back. And we must continue to lobby our legislators in Richmond. I for one will continue to do that to make sure that we get more of our. Dollars that tax dollars we send to Richmond come back to support our school system.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yeah, great question. Um, having been through several, uh, seen several budget cycles play out, it's. You know, we, we can't look at budget as this thing that is done, you know, between February and May and it's, it's thrown out and then it's, it's advertised. It's talked about, it's tweaked and it's approved and okay. Budgets approved, we're done until next year. That's the budget season cycle. That's typically how it's been done. We can't continue to look at it that way because to, we just don't have enough money to solve all the problems that we have to solve. Um, and I think it's important to point out that nearly seventy percent, give or take of county residents, don't actually have kids in public schools. Yet they are paying taxes to fund our public school. So we have a fiduciary responsibility to spend every penny we can as efficiently and as wisely as possible. There's a couple of things that, that, a couple of tools at our disposal, as we've talked about. Strategic planning, the school board has gone through a strategic planning process, which for the first time has put. I don't want to say for the first time, uh, but ha, has put in place, um. Measurable goals that are tied there, that hopefully the superintendent's performance will be tied to, so we can go back and look. At whether or not we're making progress towards our goals. And that was, that's an important step and, and I'm told over a hundred thousand residents had input in this. In this process. So we need to get that plan in place and we need to stick to that plan. We can't be changing the plan every other week. You know, the, there's no point of having a plan if you don't stick to it and execute it. The second thing that I would push for is what's called a line of business review. The Board of Supervisors does this. It's a top-down borderline forensic look. At all of your lines of business down to the very minute level. The school board has not done this. To my knowledge, ever, it may have been many years ago, but recently has not done it. The Board of Supervisors does it typically every ten years. That needs to get done because there are a lot of programs and there's a school board with that responsibility of, of the fiduciary responsibility. We need to be on top of what's going on. And it's continuing to make wise investments in things like carbon neutrality, because as the school board has made going carbon neutral a priority. That's resulted in nearly ten million dollars of annual savings and that ten million dollars instead of going towards, you know, energy production. Is going back into our classrooms. So it's continuing to look at those smart investments that we can make. That are going to take dollars out of non-classroom-based, uh, uh, services and put them in the classroom.
Mr. McAlvin.
So I just begin my comments with a, a quote that may, may result in some cringes from, from this group, but, um, from the late, great. Superintendent Butts Palain, which was keep the main thing, the main thing. Um, and that's ultimately should be the priority of, of every budget that the school system produces. Keep academics. Keep the student experience at the forefront. Ultimately, a budget is a statement of priorities. As Eliang inferred, eighty-eight percent of our FCPS budget is personnel. So when you try to increase or try to decrease class size, try to increase the number of, of teacher salary, that has the, the biggest impact on the budget. Frankly, that's, that's really where our focus should be, uh, primarily. The WABE guide shows that we're in the middle of surrounding districts. I don't think we're spending money poorly. And in part, that's due to the work of, of prior boards in hiring, um, an internal audit function. I, I'm a little worried that that, that function is, is not, uh, living up to what it, 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 it used to be. Um, I want to make sure that we're implementing thoroughly the recommendations that come from, from our independent auditor, auditor general. FCPS is also going through a central office reorganization. I want to make sure that that doesn't lead to administrative bloat. One of the things we began a few years ago was a multi-year budgeting process, um, akin to what Kyle was referring to as, as kind of a lines of business. I, I, I too would like to see that, um, part of, part of our, our structure, um, going forward. One tent, um, one concrete example of. A worry I see when it comes to budgeting is, um, what's currently, what's coming out now is an adoption of Chromebooks at the high school level. We worked very hard when we went one-to-one to make sure that we had. Devices that would accommodate all the applications high school students, middle school students would need. Chromebooks won't do that and we'll end up having to create computer labs again in middle schools and high schools. So that's one example of, of an area where I would look to cut.
Thank you. Um, we will be moving on to our fourth question, but before we do, I'd like to. Inform our audience that because of the amount of questions we, since we got a lot of questions, we will be adding it, an additional question. So with that, the fourth question is. Quote, the economy, the economy now has careers ready to accept students with professional and technical skills. However, FCPS has limited capacity for expanding our career and technical education classes. How will we expand? How do we expand our academies? And offer more students the opportunities to gain professional and technical education? To expand the options, options they have upon graduation. We will start with Mr. Manier.
It's a very simple answer. And then the answer is community partnership. Because we, our budgets are very tight as we have seen. So if we are expanding. Definitely we will look into the budget to see if we can expand more technically, uh, carrier-oriented, uh, institutions around our, uh, in, in Fairfax County. But at the same time, there are a couple of things we can do. We can also partner up with the community. Outreach and have those, uh, facilities available, uh, for our students to be successful professionally. A, a, and skill-wise within the community, um, a, and for, for the world after, after their graduation. Also, the, the, the second part, uh, that I want to expand on is. Why not utilize also the summer time when the schools are closed and we can offer a technical classes during that time? Uh, for our students to be successful in, in, in carrier and technology in, during that time as well, when, when the, their other education is not interrupted. So I'm very, uh, for it, uh, but we have to come up with the, with the very smart way of handling this, um. This situation because we do need, I agree hundred percent that we do need more technical education institute in Fairfax County. Thank you.
Mr. Webb.
Thank you for the question. Uh, this is a, a cornerstone of what I've been talking about throughout the campaign is career readiness. As a professional working in higher education, um, I understand that many of our students are looking to go to college, but there is a, just as many students who are looking to go into the workforce. And we must make this in a, a task of the schools, to go work to provide those opportunities for them. Uh, we must expand and make it easier for our students to get to our academies. That's typically one of the biggest challenges. Is that students want to take advantage of the academies that we have in place in the county, but. Access to them is, is their challenge to get to those locations or work them into their schedule. We need to work with those students who want to take advantage of those and make every opportunity available to them to take advantage of those classes. We must also work with community partners. We must find externships and internships for those students to take advantage of, apprenticeships. We all know that within that world, we all need services. Students can walk out the door on day one with a diploma in one hand and a certificate in the other and going into the workforce. We all know that they're plumbers, electricians, auto mechanics. All those are high-paying jobs that we all would not be able to exist if we don't have those type of services out there. And these are high-paying careers that students can go into. And being that we live in one of the most expensive areas in the country. They can have high-paying jobs and be able to support and sustain themselves and their families. We need to make sure that students across the county, particularly those in our marginalized communities have access to be able to, to take advantage of these. And I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we are funding those programs. And making sure that we're working with community partners in a way that we currently are not, to make sure we are giving students ample opportunities to career. And technical education because these are jobs that our students can take advantage of. And be high performers and taking advantage of, of careers that makes their lives much better.
Mr. McDaniel.
Thanks. It's a good question. Um, and one of our former, one of the former candidates for, for this office, Chris Lewis, he, he talked about this, um, a, a, a lot. I, I, I think that, you know, I'm a typical millennial. I have more student loan debt than I care to admit. So I, this is a issue of personal importance to me. Because when I was growing up and going into high school, it was college, 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 college. And if you can't go to college, well, we have some vocational stuff over here, or we have a CTE over here, or we have this other program over here. We need to break that model. It's not college, 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 or if you can't make it there, go do something else. These need to be equal, uh, co-equal options that kids need to know about and families need to know about. So I think that, that's step number one. Right now, CTE is, uh, to my knowledge, in the strategic plan and just like everything else in the strategic plan, you know, we need to have measurable goals. With performance reviews tied back to that to ensure they're implementate, they're implemented. Fundamentally, this is going to boil down to expanding the academies within the schools because the challenge is if we just put an academy. Or a CTE program in a high school. We have a transportation issue of getting kids back and forth from whatever school they may be at to the other building where the, where the program is offered. So that's, that's, uh. That's an issue that's got to be addressed as we start to expand this as well. And I, I, I generally agree with, with, with everything else that's been said, but I, I think that, you know, we, we've got to do some de-stigmatization and we've got to do some education. And again, we have to break this notion that, you know, if, that, that CTE is secondary to college and that, you know, colleges is. Going in the first place because there are a lot of career fields out there. I'm in aviation. I can tell you the mainline airlines, Delta, United, Southwest, they are all dumping college degree requirements left and right. Because it's just not the world that I was in when I was in high school. It's a very different place. And we need to keep up with that and we need kids to understand that there are a lot of really great career paths out there that pay a lot of money and have dire needs. And they don't require a college degree and, and we need to be promoting that and educating people about that.
Mr. McElveen?
So first I want to thank Irv Varcony, who, who asked this question, I believe. Um, Irv was, has, has served many years on our, our C-TAC committee and was my appointee for many years. I'm grateful for his service, um, along with many others in our community. Um, so ultimately what this question comes down to is ensuring that, that we have uh, and are graduating well-rounded students that can, can succeed in the workforce. Um, just to point to some of the things, some of the innovative product, projects that we've, we've worked on uh, in the past to bring to FCPS. Uh, we created an IT apprenticeship program called Genesis Works. Um, and that's, that program is still active and we have students graduating with, with IT credentials through that. Um, we have, uh, as Kyle mentioned earlier, teachers teach for tomorrow. Uh, and that's implemented in many, in, in several schools. I hope that we can expand that uh, to both uh, uh, enrich those students, but also to help uh, address our teacher shortage issue. Um, we've partnered with Mentor Works. Um, I'm actually a mentor to a, a student at, at Falls Church High School through that program, which is a wonderful way to bring um, bring uh, professionals from the workforce and into work with our students. Um, and we also expanded our IB offerings to include the IB certificate, career certificate program, um, which has uh, been critical for ensuring that, um, no matter where our students are on the spectrum, that they have the opportunity to pursue an IB diploma. Uh, even if they want to go into a technical career. One of the last things I would mention is that uh, when I was on the board, I created the um, FCPS uh, networking alumni group, um, which is an effort to better engage our alumni uh, and bring them back to FCPS to give back and, and to better mentor students. And so um, I'm hopeful that in this next term, we can really ramp up that work. I know the superintendent is passionate about that as well.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Jack. Uh, a lot of, a lot of good points have been made by other candidates, but let me add just a few more things. Uh, this is basically seconding what Mr. Webb has already stated about our internship and externships opportunities. A should be available to all students throughout the county. You know, in the past, many of these internship opportunities were limited to a certain geographical area. Um, perhaps because of proximity to those business locations. So as a result of that, cer- certain part, students in certain part of the county were at disadvantage in taking, in, in a, having an opportunity, having same kind of opportunity to have internships. So we need to work more closely uh, with these business partners and community partners, community organizations to make those opportunities more equitably available throughout the county. That is something that school board should be working on. And another point is a about our career technical education programs being uh, not just for those who are pursuing uh, jobs right after high school graduation. That should be, that should be a available and that should be really encouraged for all students in Fairfax County. Whether you go to job, you go, you go to employment right away or you go to for your, for your colleges. Because I remember when I first came to the US in my first year, the class that I liked the most was a shop class where I learned to draw, do architectural drawing and, and even building a transistor radio. Would you believe that? Uh, I built a transistor radio back then. And also developing, you know, camera films and putting out, putting out the pictures, et cetera. I really enjoyed that. I didn't go to get a job right after high school. I went to college. I ended up going to law school. But I, I hope that our, all of our students have an opportunity to see what the real jobs, what kind of skills real job markets require us to have. So that when they go to college, as they decide upon majors, they can think about uh, the what they learn through these internship opportunities.
Alright, thank you. We'll now be moving on to our fifth and final question from the audience. The question is, quote, "A study that came out this week revealed that students are becoming less knowledgeable in civics and history. Yet history curriculum has fallen under attack from Republicans. How can we ensure that students are receiving an excellent, adequate and expansive civics and history education?" I will start with Mr. Webb.
And that's a great question. Um, I, I saw that study as well and it is very disappointing that students are not receiving the type of education that they need. And I believe that's the start of the, the issues that we have in this country right now. Because students don't understand what has happened in the past and making an efforts to, to keep those type of things from repeating themselves. Um, I am a huge proponent of making sure that our students are learning accurate, inclusive history. Um, because if they aren't learning that, they are destined to repeat things that have happened. We must make sure of that, even though we have folks in Richmond trying to make sure our history is whitewashed. Make sure that we are teaching history that quote unquote, doesn't offend certain people. We must make sure that is accurate. Things happen and things are destined to happen again if we don't teach that. Um, we need to make sure that um, classes such as the African-American AP corset has been discussed many times, that those type of courses are offered as a option in the curriculum for our students to learn much more about the history of the African-American plight. We must make sure that API history is taught, Muslim American history is taught. Because we have a very diverse community that we need to make sure that our students know more about what's going on within our community. Um, the more we know about our friends, our neighbors, the better off we will be as a, as a country and a society. I think that has been the downfall that has been going on over the last decade. Because we don't know each other. We don't know each other's past and what potential struggles have happened. And I would be a, a huge proponent to make sure that we not only make sure that the history is taught accurately, but we expand on the history of cultures across the county as, as we are a richly diverse county. Um, to make sure that students know about one another's history. Um, and I think that for one is something that we must do and make sure that we do all we can to fight those that are trying to, to limit the, what was, what's we're teaching in our classrooms.
Mr. McDaniel?
Um, I, again, ditto to, to, to what's been said. I, I would add that, um, you know, I, I saw that study and it's, it's not disappointing. It's, it's, it's not just disappointing. It's also, it's very troubling and disturbing, this trend across the country from predominantly, you know, uh, very obviously Republican lawmakers and activist types to go after history, to go after civics, not just in the cla- we don't see it just in the classroom. And we see it, I mean, voter rights are under attack across the country as well. Um, yeah, at, at the end of the day, our kids need to be educated about history, the good, the bad and the ugly. Because we, in order to um, have a, a well-educated, well-rounded um, uh, citizenry, we have to teach history. So any, 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 you know, attacks on, on curriculum through, through political leaders or, or anything like that. I don't support uh, this, this notion that we can just whitewash history and, and teach a rosier version of it. I don't support any of that. And I don't think, no one on this call is going to support that either. Um, but for, to me fundamentally what it boils down to and, and one of the things that we need to be doing to safeguard against this is making it very clear that we support our teachers. We support their professional autonomy, as we've talked about. And we support and we respect their expertise in these fields. And they're the ones that work with other experts in these fields to develop curriculum, develop the teaching plans of the textbooks. Um, and, and we're going to, we're going to have their backs. Um, we're going to protect them and we are going to make sure that when these issues do come up, um, we as the school system say, you know, listen, we respect our teachers. We're going to support them in teaching fair, holistic, contextual-based, accurate history and civics.
Mr. McElveen?
So I, I love this question. Um, it's something I think about a lot. Uh, going back to earlier discussion, um, I mentioned that uh, we, we looked toward the Parkland um, incident in, in 2018 as, as a learning experience. Um, and part of that was we saw students standing up uh, and expressing their voices uh, at, at our, throughout our schools and around the country. But we saw that some students, uh, depending on the school, were treated differently uh, if they wanted to speak out. Um, and so that was an issue that I, I sought to take on uh, head on. Passing the first uh, civic engagement day proposal um, in the United States. So that students have an opportunity once a year to, to um, use, it take a day off to speak out either through protest, uh, meeting with legislators, uh, voting, uh, doing uh, whatever civic, civic engagement activity um, they, they find appropriate. Um, and this, it was viewed um, so positively on both sides of the aisle that uh, students uh, took the argument to the state and the state passed a law so that now every student has that opportunity. That's one example of Fairfax leading the way on, on progressive issues. Um, and uh, you know, another issue that has come up and people have spoken about is, is the issue of, of the Virginia Department of Education's um, listening tour. Uh, and I joined uh, several former school board colleagues in writing a, a, a letter uh, to push back on that. Um, very concerned about uh, the, the new curriculum being rife with historical errors. Um, history not being taught in an inclusive way. Um, uh, de-emphasizing critical thinking in favor of ro- memorization. Um, and a lack of uh, focus on racial gender and religious diversity. So I think those are, those are things that all of us uh, uh, have, have concerns about in the curriculum. And just to take one thing that, that Mr. Webb said earlier, one step further is that um, I'm not only a supporter of, of adopting uh, Amer- uh, African-American studies. I would love to see Virginia follow in the footsteps of Illinois and California and adopt uh, ethnic studies curriculum. I think that's a way to, to be inclusive, to include, um, to include many communities and, and have uh, that be an opportunity for our students to study.
Man?
Uh, thank you, Jack. I want to thank Mr. Webb for pointing out that our county is composed of students and people of diverse backgrounds. You know, Asian, as an Asian American, when we have 20% of our student body uh, of Asian background. When we look at what we teach our students, whether it's world history or US history, the contributions made by Asians or Asian Americans, or even the discrimination suffered legally or by people, I mean, structurally or just people in, in their interaction with Asians are not really taught in our history class. Our history class should teach history accurately and got to provide both goods and bads. You know, dark part and then parts that we are very proud of. That should be all given to our students so that, so that as the students become leaders in next generation, that they will not make the same mistakes that our ancestors might have made. So uh, if a stable of education does not put those things in their standard, we, as an independent, we have a constitutional right under Virginia constitution to operate our school system that in our own i- in, in the best interest of our students in the way we feel the best in providing a, a education for our students, we can supplement their standard with the instructional materials we fear, we fear suitable for our students and community.
Mr. Manier?
Yeah, I'll ditto everything my uh, uh, my colleagues have said and, and they're on point on this. And I think we all are similar in that regard, that we all have a similar ideas and we will back each other up on those ideas. But one of the things that I do want to point out is that our superintendent, current superintendent, uh, who has written a letter to the governor and it was a very well-written letter regarding the history and, and basically pushing back on it. I think our administration currently in the Fairfax County administration is pushing it back, this whole issue onto the governor. And I think our school board members need to stand behind her and support her in that. And, and this is huge right now. Uh, it's a very, um, very big thing. So I, I would support her in a big time. And as a board members, I will ask other board members to also join me to, to support her in, in, in this effort. Uh, because yes, we need to stop our governor from taking history away. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Manier. We will now move into closing statements. Again, you'll each have two minutes to speak. Mr. McDaniel, we'll start with you.
Um, so I'll, I'll be brief. I would like to say again, thank you everybody for attending. Um, what I think that, that, that everyone has heard on this forum is that all five of the candidates running um, are all very well qualified and will be better than any Republican uh, on the board. Um, and I would be proud to work with or support any of them. Um, but I'm going to go back to the point that I made in my opening statement and really what got me running and what I see as being the biggest issue that this next school board is going to face. And that's again, working as a team. It's working as a team to a- address equity gaps in ac- in academics. It's working as a team to protect our LGBTQ community, which is heavily under attack. Um, it's working as a team to address childhood hunger by eliminating fees for lunch and making school lunch debt a non-existent thing anymore. It's about working as a team to promote safe schools and to go to Richmond and to lobby for common sense gun reform. So we don't have kids having the trauma of active shooter drills and metal detectors and bulletproof backpacks. And it's about working as a team to address that big hairy audacious problem of mental health that is going to define the decade uh, in academics. And if we can focus on working as a team and getting along and collaborating, being collegial and being transparent, not just at the school board, but with all of our teachers, all of our staff, with parents, with students and with the community at large, uh, we're going to have a much brighter future ahead of us. And I fundamentally believe that as we have emerged from COVID, we have a choice. We can sink to those who would pit equity against excellence. Or we can say, no, equity and excellence can coexist in peace and we're going to build that right here in Fairfax County. Uh, we, we have a choice. We can sink into fear and anger and cynicism, or we can embrace courage, hope and optimism. I know what world I want my little girls to grow up in. And that's the world that all five of us have talked about building. Is a world where FCPS has a high quality, well-rounded education in a safe and welcoming environment for every child, regardless of zip code. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to Mr. McElveen.
Well, thanks. Thanks to everyone for a wonderful conversation. And I think as we've seen today, much work remains to be done to make SCPS the best district in the nation, which is, I think, as Kyle mentioned, the aspiration of all of us uh, here on this call. Uh, but I believe we're at a time where we need to reset and rebuild uh, and really create a renaissance of, of education here in Fairfax County. And that leaves me with much hope for the future. What makes me unique is I bring a vision of progressive priorities and a record of, of implementing them and getting things done. Uh, I began by looking at my past record. I'm going to close here, just highlighting some of the things that I stand for. Um, I strongly uh, will push for uh, gun violence prevention efforts. I will stand up for universal pre-kindergarten. I'll make sure that we have uh, free and healthy meals for every student. That we have mental health services for everyone, both students and staff. Uh, and that we work toward a more sustainable future with solar panels on every school. I have two daughters, as I mentioned. I'm invested in this system for 18 more years. Um, I believe that we can overcome the challenges of the pandemic and make our system uh, what it uh, has the potential to be. Um, and as I've been saying throughout my campaign, together, let's bring the joy back to education. I believe I have the experience and the vision to make that happen. And I ask for your vote. I'll, I'd take all three of your votes, but we have other good candidates as well. So I'll settle for one of your votes. Uh, and I look forward to um, further conversations down the road. So thank you again for a wonderful conversation.
Mr. Man?
Thank you, Jack. Thanks to everybody for staying with us for a couple of hours. You know, as you can, as you can tell, we have a five good candidates. And unfortunately, we can only endorse three of us. So uh, you know, think hard and try, you know, and come to a decision as to which three of us will make the best and larger team to be able to work with the district candidate so that we can all win in the November. Unless we win, we're not going to be able to implement, implement the things, policies that we, we discussed about. So we need to win first and we need to find the winning team. I am better tested candidate. I had run many campaigns before. And I had to serve 20 years, one more time. It's a 20 years on the school board. I can, I know how to work on a budget, how to develop policies, how to work with other board members, how to interact with the community members. And also I know how to help district candidates win their election. I want to see all 12 Democratic candidates to win in November. With that, I am seeking your support in the upcoming caucus. I have endorsements from, you know, many elected officials, including all nine Democratic supervisors and also Congressman Jenny Connolly and former chairman of the Board of Supervisors and blah, blah. But I need an endorsement from every one of you. And if you can, in hope that you can, you will consider, consider ranking me as your number one choice. But if you cannot, please keep me within your top three. And thank you.
Mr. Munir?
Thank you, everyone. Every child needs to feel valued, nurtured, and seen in our schools. No matter if you are new to our country or county, as I was, or come from a historically unrepresentative community, or struggling with learning a new language, or a member of the LGBTQ plus community, or a student with disability. Children must feel welcomed and included in our schools, classrooms, and our extracurricular programs, and have the opportunity to participate in advanced academics and other speciality programs, no matter where they live in the Fairfax. Zip code should not determine access to opportunity. We need to build a more equitable society. Today, some people act like equity, helping realize the full potential of every child is a four-letter word. They falsely claim that equity means knocking down our top performers rather than lifting up those who have fallen or stayed behind. I believe that we must expand year-round literacy and science, technology, engineering, arts, and math programs with a focus in widening the interest and participation of underrepresented students. We must ensure students in all our schools feel safe and are secure. I will promote programs that foster and prevent violence, bullying, harassment, substance abuse, and hate speech. And now, as a former Fairfax County public school student, as a father, an advocate, as a community leader, and as a technology professional, I humbly ask that you put your faith in me so that I can use my background, education, and experience to serve as a powerful, yet calm, and reconciliatory voice for the Fairfax County community as a Fairfax County school board member at large. Friends, I humbly ask you to support, vote to show that your school matters and diversity matters, both culturally and professionally. And go green. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
For sticking with us and learning about each of us. We have, I think, five very qualified candidates who are running. I feel like I present myself as a candidate who is ready on day one. I've worked very hard over my career in education, worked very hard as an elected official prior to moving to the county, and I will bring that experience to Fairfax. I, for one, built a reputation of being a person who listens, being a person who is approachable, and build, being a person who will work with not only my colleagues, but within our community to make sure that everyone has a voice. I will work hard to make sure that our marginalized communities, who sometimes feel left out of the conversation, have a voice on the board. I will make sure that those students who are working hard and our staff members who work just as hard to make sure everyone is receiving a, a strong education, that they have a voice. We need to make sure that those who are working against us down in Richmond, that we are doing all we can to stop them. We need to be the wall that protects our students, our LGBTQ students. We need to make sure that we are providing accurate history. We need to make sure that we are providing opportunities for all of our students, regardless of where they live in the county. We need to make sure that when any student in Fairfax County walks across the stage, they are able to take on whatever challenge that they want. Going into the workforce to provide for themselves and their families or going on to pursue a four-year college education. I strongly ask for your support as a person who is battle-tested and ready on day one to work with my colleagues and fight for our students.
Candidates, thank you so much for your time this afternoon. I hope that this forum has been a helpful resource for our voters as we move into the endorsement process. And if we didn't get to your question this afternoon, we'd like, we will try to have our candidates answer and get back to you as soon as possible. A quick reminder before we go, the endorsement caucus will be open to all voters who registered prior to today between May 13th and May 20th. More information is available at FairfaxDemocrats.org. And this forum will be publicly accessible on the committee's social media pages. With that, I will now bring this forum to a close. Thank you so much for joining us this afternoon, and I hope you have a great rest of your day.